Okay, we will reconvene the January 21st Dublin City Council meeting and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. So Andy, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, my good friend Thea Walsh is here. Welcome, Thea. Thank you. You are going to make a presentation to us regarding the 2020-2025 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thanks for having us here this evening. I'm with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. I'm the Transportation Director. And every four years, we update something known as the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for the region. And in that, it's a 20-year period, at least a 20-year period, where we look at all the transportation projects that could possibly happen during that time, with the potential funding, all the various funding sources, federal, state, local dollars, like you work to allocate every day, to determine how we're going to make all those different things happen. So a little backup here, what is MORPC? Sometimes people don't know who we are. So I told you a little bit about one of the things we do, and what I think is the most important thing that we do. But we work on transportation and infrastructure, planning and sustainability for the region. We do a large number of data mapping applications for other communities in the region. We provide residential services, including heating and weatherization assistance to needy families. Government affairs, so we actually help advise cities and counties and township members that are part of our organization on what's going on at the State House, what's going on the federal level that may impact them and their process, as well as we do a whole effort around communication engagement with the community and helping share what's going on in the region. So this map up here also does show what our footprint is, an area of interest for MORPC. The colors just signify different membership levels. We operate similar to a Chamber of Commerce for governments. However, there are certain areas, the one in the red outline, which is known as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, I'll hop to that right there. That area, we get specific federal funding for every year. It's approximately $40 million that comes into the region to be spent specifically in this area, in the Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary. And you'll see that Dublin is in that boundary, both on the Franklin County and Union County side. And maybe, do you guys have a little bit of Delaware County too? Yep. So all sides of Dublin is covered, see, in there. And we help service that area, which means you're eligible for federal grants through MORPC. Just a little backup, I mentioned, we do a long-range planning process that's at least 20 years, fiscally constrained, all those dollars. We do update it every four years. It does have to be approved by ODOT and the USDOT. So there's a whole process we have to go through. We've been working on it for about two years right now, and we're heading into the last part of it, where we're looking for that feedback from the local entities. So we've put a lot of your plans, a lot of your information, and then now we're getting to that last part. And that's what I'm here to tell you about. So why is it important? A number of things, every four years, why is it important we update it every four years? Is because things change. Demographics change, preferences change, the demand on the transportation system changes. And what we're seeing is that, you may have heard of Insight 2050, where we do recognize the fact that in our region, we'll be growing by up to as many as a million more people in the greater region area. And that's going to impact how we move around the region too, and some of these projects that will be coming to light in the next 20-plus years. So here's a little bit of those demographic changes. Inside that smaller boundary of the seven-county area, we know that by 2050, we'll at least be 622,000 more. And then if you look at it in the greater footprint of MORPC, which is a 15-county area, that's when we can account for almost a million more people. And then in households, we expect that'll be about 244,000 more households and 290,000 more jobs. So more jobs, more households, more people means more people on the roads, where people need to go places, people needing services, and that's going to impact our system. Also, preferences towards smaller homes, being able to walk more places and be able to be connected to places, having amenities like parks and bike paths and things like that. And a lot of that comes from the fact that people actually, based on what we're learning about this demographic, is that some folks don't have to choose where they live based on where they work anymore, right? They can work, or they can live where they want to live, and work in the job they want to do by telecommuting. And so being able to provide a community where that can happen is very important. And so things like having a smart streets policy, as your city manager helped us with devising not too long ago, ensuring that we install fiber as we do projects, is really important, so that we can keep that advanced community and region of the future that people want to live in. Also, more mobility, bike trail options, having bus options, and then of course, having those green space amenities for folks. Now, we start this whole process, and it was about a year and a half ago, that we were talking about goals. But we focus on a number of goals that our board, which is made up of great folks like your mayor and your city manager, approve as we move forward. And those started with reducing per-capita energy consumption to promote alternative fuels, protecting natural resources as we're going through this process, positioning Central Ohio to attract and retain economic opportunity, creating sustainable neighborhoods, increasing regional collaboration, when we can work together to make a project happen, and then using public investments, like our federal dollars and our state dollars, to ensure the health benefits of health and safety and welfare for the people in Central Ohio. And so this is a little bit about the process. We do a lot of input into that process. We take local plans, like the city of Dublin's local plans, data and demographics about your part of the region, engagement from your citizens, and goals and objectives that we help form through your leadership. That goes in, and we evaluate those projects based on criteria such as our goals, fiscal analysis, which is basically looking at what kind of dollars are going to come in, based on what are the needs we're going to have, and wants and desires, as well, look at the entire list. And then the impact, what's going to make the greatest impact on the most amount of traffic, the most amount of people. And then ultimately, the regional strategies of how we're going to spend and deploy those dollars, what are going to be the priority projects, and then documenting that all for our friends at the state and federal government, so that we can continue getting those grant dollars year after year for the projects that you want to do. So as we started this process, we have a number of projects that were desired by the public. We had an early public comment period, which was more of a blank slate. People could just draw on our website the type of project they wanted, or just write into us. And bike and pedestrian projects seem to be the most commented-on public comment that we get, is like, I really want a bike path here, I really want pedestrian path here. Then followed by transit recommendations, a lot of folks who comment on that. And then it just kind of goes down the line on the various types of roadway projects, from intersections, new roadways, major widenings, and they're just all converting to a freeway, all the way down to converting to a freeway. So but you can see kind of the basis of what people are most interested there in that graph. All right. So from all this, we've kind of are starting to develop strategies around first, preserving what we have. So ensuring that we have preservation of the existing roadway system, it operates good, it's a safe and secure environment for the motorists, folks walking and biking on it, and then ensuring that it meets the demands of the public. And then, because we are a growing region, then we also have to consider the development of that system. So the bike and pedestrian infrastructure first, because that seems to be where people are very focused, followed by transit infrastructure, rail freight that supports industry, multimodal infrastructures for trucking, where trucking and rail pretty much meet most of the time, and then roadway infrastructure, as well as we continue to develop. Although I will say land is becoming less and less for that roadway expansion, so we're constantly thinking of ways, the best ways to use it. As you've seen, there's been, if you've been on 670, heading north towards Gehanna, they've added something called a smart lane, that helps you use the shoulder. So more creative ideas, things that incorporate technology, we're going to just see more and more of that. And actually adding that lane would have cost a lot more than just doing the improvements that they did there, although it was not cheap. It was still less than trying to add a whole other lane. And so that's the kind of thing you're going to see in the future of the planning. So what I'm here to tell you about tonight is basically that we are interested in comments from the entire region. We have open public meeting coming up on February 26th, where we'll be inviting the public in to literally look at the map of all the planned projects for the region, comment on those, add additional projects, and then public comments will be received all the way up through April 3rd. We do have a list of projects that we're working to finalize for that meeting. We will send over an advanced copy to the city manager's office and the public service director, right, to allow for additional feedback to the leadership of Dublin as well. I'm sure that you'll want to participate in that process. And then in May, the goal is to be able to wrap all that up for adoption. We normally have to turn that over to ODOT, and then they ultimately turn it over to the USDOT in enough time for it to be approved for July 1. So what we'll be asking is for that review of those roadway projects when we send those over, which will be in the next couple of weeks, and to comment during the comment period. That's both the city itself, as well as citizens, are welcome to make, come, be a part of that process. If there are any questions, we do have our contact information up there. We can provide hard copies, translated materials as needed. And then we also have a website where all this stuff can be found, and there's already projects that have people proposed on our website that people can see. So that's out there. And then I think there's one more slide. I'm Thea Walsh. The lead planner on this is Maria Shopper. She's great at answering all your questions, but if she's not available, I'm also available. That's pretty much it, but glad to entertain any questions of council or citizens that may have questions about the long-range planning classes at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission.
Right, wonderful. Thank you. Questions from council? Well, Thea, I cannot thank you enough. Having been involved in MORPC, it's really, you and William and all of those folks run an outstanding organization, and it is such, we are so fortunate to have an organization like MORPC in Central Ohio, that can combine all of this information from all of these entities and take a unified voice to the State House and the White House, and, you know, try to seek out dollars to make these things come to fruition. Because I don't believe any of us could do this independently. So thank you for unifying the efforts, really, for the entire region, and helping us with things like track reallocations and things that have been game changers in the mobility in our city. So thank you very much for what you do. We will look forward to seeing these drafts, and we will put it out on through all our social medias to make sure that our residents have enough opportunity to comment as they have interest. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor. And you guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, next we will have a presentation. I believe that Megan is to give on the AEP trans, a proposed AEP transmission line, but maybe Dana wants to do an introduction?
Yeah, I'm going to actually present this information. Nick's going to queue me up here, and then we'll go through this.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity here to bring up the date on the latest relative to the AEP transmission line. You might recall at your December 2nd meeting, city council gave direction to staff regarding this proposed transmission line. At that meeting, council had stated its preference for an option three route, which I'll go over here in a minute, with 65-foot pole height, as proposed by city staff with modification. And that modification was considering placing that up along the new University Boulevard if possible. We've had ongoing meetings with AEP since then, and AEP agrees to this route and the 65-foot pole height in that area. And again, I'll go over this in more detail. And so we appreciate that. So we were able to answer that question. Council also asked for burial costs of the transmission line along University Boulevard. And these costs were given to us by AEP, for a quarter mile of burial along that route at $3 to $5 million, and then a half mile of $5 to $7 million. And that's, again, is along University Boulevard only. There's a lot of, you know, general information or information about that and specifics. We did more work with AEP on burial costs. I'll just cover that really quickly throughout. Since December 2nd, we had asked AEP to break those costs down more on a per-mile basis, which they did, and what comprises those costs based on their experience. We had asked them also if they could give us an example of a similar project, preferably here in Central Ohio, which they did, based on a 2011 project that had happened, generally of the same kind. And then when you, and they gave us a breakdown of that information. And when you put that in today's dollars, it validates the information that they gave us. Likewise, there was a committee of the residents of Ballantyne who looked at the cost-per-mile basis on their own, did a really good job, gave us a breakdown of numbers that we looked at. And generally, their numbers were the same or even higher. So it was a validation on both parties' part, and we appreciate AEP's involvement and the residents' involvement in validating the burial costs. Going on from there, if you stand back and look at this slide, this is an overview of the proposed routes. So as we left it on December 2nd, we had these two routes that had been under consideration. Staff had proposed a route that kind of cut this corner. And then council asked us to look at the University Boulevard route. So if you stand back and look at this, the route that we are proposing now is from the Dublin substation along Shire Rings Road, and then turns up along University Boulevard to Iderman Road, and then goes westerly over to the Ammon Substation. Just to break that down a little bit closer, this zooms in generally more so on everything west, west of Avery Road. Just wanted to blow that up so you could see it better. So what the purple line represents, and going back to the Dublin station, is there are really no options for that route, as you know. We've talked about that. So that's going to be a consolidation of both the existing distribution lines along Shire Rings Road there, as well as the new transmission line. So that pole height will be at about 80 foot, which is what that purple line represents. As I'll talk about here in a few minutes, we would also propose to take a hard look at trying to work with AEP and others who are on those poles, namely, others, people other than electric. So that's your internet, phone, services, video, cable TV services, to see if we can't find a burial option for that going back along Shire Rings Road. There is some conduit available back along Shire Rings Road that we might be able to access to get those additional lines off of that, so that cleans that up a little bit as it comes down through there. But the trade-off still is that 80-foot height, which would have to happen to accommodate both transmission and distribution. This yellow line, and it's, again, this is a little bit vague still, but this yellow line intends to represent an area in which the pole height would transition from 80 feet down to 65 feet. Now, our preference would be here that we work with AEP to try to make that transition happen as far east as possible. But I would also caution that by doing that, you still may have a relatively large pole here at this turn, and up at this turn. And I'm not a, I am not a line engineer, but I've been around this stuff enough to know that when you turn these lines like that on angles, you wind up with a little bit bigger, beefier pole in order to support that. So generally speaking, we can stay at that 60-foot height, 65-foot height. This blue line represents the 65-foot height with transmission, 138 KV transmission only on it, because distribution with the new construction will be put underground with the new construction of University Boulevard, as we do with any new road system we build. So, but the transmission would stay above ground. And that's, again, that's what enables that height to come down to 65 feet. But again, this transition area is up for discussion and up for finite engineering. I'll cover that here again in a second. And by the way, just so everyone understands, the widths of these lines are not to scale. They don't represent the right-of-way width. The right-of-way width needed for this line is, still remains 80 feet, regardless of whether it's 80-foot high or 65-foot high. So those lines do not represent that. But one other thing, key thing to point out is, the line would be on the north side of Shire Rings Road, and then it would transition to the south side of University Boulevard, on what is the city-owned property, which is here, and then the city-owned property up here. I'll come back to this slide here in a minute, just to talk about conservation easements. So then when you zoom back out again, just explaining everything I just did for a second time, so all, or third time. So the purple from Dublin Substation is that 80-foot height, the transition area, and then along University Boulevard with the 60-foot, 60-foot height. So again, AEP has agreed to this concept, staff is supportive of this, and then the final engineering will determine the transition. And there's intricacies with the final engineering. And again, I would only caution about these turn poles and things like that, angular poles, they call them, can vary a little bit when those come into play. Furthermore, so the recommendation of staff to council is that council support the proposed route, as depicted in the graphic that I just went over with you. This language here attempts to describe that more, but let's just go over it. So between, again, between the Dublin Substation and University Boulevard, the city would strive to ensure only transmission and distribution lines on those poles, as I mentioned, trying to get the other stuff on those poles buried. There was a discussion at the previous meeting about shared-use path along that section of the route and landscaping to be incorporated, more than likely under future capital improvement budgets, in order that we try to mitigate the aesthetic impact of the poles, and also to provide connectivity with the shared-use path between Emerald Parkway and Avery Road. Now, again, that line would generally be on the north side of the road. Doesn't mean that the shared-use path would be on the north side of the road yet. That's up for design. Much of that path, or sections of that path, are currently on the south side of the road. So it could happen on either side of the road, but just want you to know, if that opportunity presents itself and it makes sense, we would incorporate that as part of the pole construction, and if AEP is amenable to that, which I have no reason to believe that they wouldn't be. Part B, between Avery Road and University Boulevard, as I talked about, is that transition area. And again, the shared-use path and landscaping would be incorporated with that as feasible. That right-of-way gets pretty narrow with the new road through that stretch from Avery to where the University Boulevard starts. So we'll do our best to make the transition and to also incorporate the shared-use path in there, which is part of the road design, by the way, as well as trying to balance that with landscaping. So as I mentioned, the route would follow University Boulevard on the south side, and would be at the height of 65 feet once it transitions, except for the turning and transition poles. And these poles will have 138 KV transmission only on it, as I talked about. And again, the opportunity there is the cross-section of the new road has a, is a divided four-lane road, generally speaking, with shared-use path sidewalk, landscaping, and so forth. When you're putting that 80-foot easement up against that right-of-way, so you're putting a transmission right-of-way up against the road right-of-way on the south side, there may be some opportunity to perhaps meander that shared-use path, create more opportunities for trees also along the road, to create more aesthetic buffer and the like. And I'll get to buffer on the south side here in a minute. The poles throughout the route would be galvanized. I think that's something we heard back from the residents in earlier meetings, that looking at putting that brown finish on the poles isn't necessarily desirable. People think, I think people felt generally that by doing that, you draw more attention to them than not. So right now, it looks like we would stay with a galvanized approach to that. And then last, staff would recommend that the city submit a letter of support for this route, and the type of construction and those things that I just covered, to the Ohio Power Signing Board in conjunction with AEP's filing to show the city's support. Now, having said that, this last, we continue to obviously hear the concerns of the residents. We hope that our residents feel that this is responsive to the things that we've been hearing. We had another meeting with Ballantyne Homeowner Association leadership this last week, as well as residents from the township attended. I want to thank Vice Mayor DeRosa and Councilmember Fox for attending that meeting as well. That was a three-plus-hour meeting discussing this and trying to determine what else might be of concern and things to address. So we spent a lot of time talking about burial as well, and those costs, and sharing information, which I really appreciated all the research that they did. These are the things that the residents suggested, and I think I captured them all, that we tried to work with them on, and staff supports these as well. One is to improve the golf course maintenance facility on Shire Rings Road. That's a pretty general statement and can mean a lot of things, but for the most part, to continue to look at the landscape buffer around that facility, try to keep the site tidier and cleaned up more than it has been, and improve the house appearance. I put et cetera on there, because I think there's a list of things I have, as I've visited that site, that I'd like to see improved on as well. I know that we're putting a new roof on the building, fixing the box gutters and the like to protect that historic building, and working with the golf, the golf club management on that facility. So we also added a sewer connection to that building as well this last year. So the point of all that is, you know, that's under contract with, and there's an agreement that governs the use of that facility, so we'll have to be somewhat sensitive to that. But I think the city can certainly lean in and do more to make that site cleaner. Secondly, improve the landscape around the city service center to ensure site views into the storage yard are minimized, and limit views towards the new transmission line. That's really as it relates more to the residents along Barron's Court Way, I think, and up against the service center there, could be to the south side as well. But we are in agreement to work with the residents and stand back and take a look at that and see what other types of things can be added. Now, there was a, there was a mention of raising the mound. I just want to say, that would not be our intention. That's a 12- or 14-foot mound, as it is, and probably one of the highest in the city. Would not recommend that. But if there are other things, like ensuring that the landscaping is sustainable, is sustained, and any additional plantings that might need to be put on or on top of that, we'll certainly work with the residents to take a look at that. Timing of that, you know, these first two items are things that we can get on and start working on and communicating on right away, and that would be our intention to do that with the leadership of the Homeowner Association, whoever wants to be involved. Item C there is the northeast and northwest corners, the intersection of Iderman Road and Shire Rings Road will be considered an entryway to Ballantyne Neighborhood. And as opportunities present themselves, improvements would be made. And I just listed this, i.e. burying existing distribution line there, continuing to improve the intersection, i.e. a potential roundabout, if that's warranted or needed, and adding landscaping and shared-use path connectivity. So let me back up and touch on the visual of that. So really, what we're talking about, let me see which one of these I want to use. This might be the better one. So really, we're talking about this area right here. This is where Iderman Road and Shire Rings Road intersects. We've been responsive with the four-way stop there, and I hope that's helping some. There could be other improvements down the road, no pun intended, down the road with that. The city does not control these properties, but perhaps as those properties develop, there may be opportunity to leverage a gateway entrance to that, similar, not exactly like the one off of Avery Road, but, you know, sort of a general entryway into Ballantyne. So we would try to work with those developments. If an intersection improvement or a road improvement happened in here, then the opportunity to perhaps bury some section of that distribution line would present itself, and we would take that under consideration at that time, and get that into budget processes that are necessary to accommodate that. But no promises. I would not make a promise other than to try to stay on top of it and try to do the best we can to make that happen. Because what happens too in these kind of situations is, if there's residual distribution line that's overhead here, and you want to bury a section here, and we've certainly done that with intersection improvements, but that's not an easy thing to achieve. We may have to back up and bury this stretch, and then bury another stretch at a later date. And so it's kind of a little bit hit and miss, but trying to work on that proactively is what we're committing to. The other item, going on to the next page, maximize landscaping along the realigned Cosgrave Ditch and conservation easement, as well as create a buffer in the southwest corner of the city-owned property, south side of University Boulevard. Okay, what's that mean? I'll just point it out here. So you might recall, we talked about the Cosgrave Ditch being relocated as part of this whole development, something the city's been wanting to do for a long time, so we're going ahead and doing that. Eventually, I would suggest, this probably, to the west, gets realigned along Shire Rings Road as well, someday, depending on what happens to the west. But the point here is, and we mentioned this at the last meeting, this green represents the required, pretty much to scale, conservation easement that's required by the EPA with that ditch relocation. And a lot can happen within that with landscaping and placing trees and the like in there to create canopy going up. Of course, that doesn't happen overnight. That happens over time. But when the ditch is relocated, that would certainly take place. The other thing the city could do is, we've talked internally about a little bit more green space in this corner added to that. It's kind of an awkward piece to develop anyway with that, so why would we not go ahead and create a little bit more- and create a little bit more green buffer? That could happen a couple ways. That could be green space with, with more canopy, or it could be a combination of water retention and, and trees and so forth. So that's yet to be determined, but something we could work on going down the road. And I would want to put in the record, and if you approve that or agree with that, we would be on the record of working on that. Now, this piece here, just to remind everyone, this acreage was intended to be neighborhood-type development. As an example, we've already agreed in the OSU Development Agreement, you might recall, that that can only be a story and a half height, so it's not like it's going to be a big, tall building or buildings. This acreage would only really accommodate so much anyway with parking. I think visually, if you could put this in your mind, we've generally thought about something like, if you're familiar with the building over off Perimeter Drive that has the Dewey's Pizza in it and the Starbucks and the bund cakes, which I try to avoid, but I love the bund cake thing and I go there whenever I can. That kind of neighborhood-type retail would go in there. Now, it could be a little bit bigger than that, depending on the acreage, or the corners at France Road, the council just approved. It's a little bit of both retail, could be a business or a neighborhood office. We would call it pad there, just depends. But generally, it's not a big-scale, high-dense-type development. And we had heard from the residents previously that some interest in some level of neighborhood retail would be interesting, as long as there was access to it. So we had also talked the other night about what kind of access could happen to that, should, and if that comes along, and we are hopeful it will, and we're going to try to do anything we can to make that happen, but what kind of access can be made to that from the neighborhood, i.e. walkable access more specifically. So that's what all that means. Improve, provide SUP connectivity, I just mentioned this, shared-use path connectivity from Ballantrey to the new development along University Boulevard. That's just what I was talking about, providing neighborhood access. And then last would be continually assess the opportunity to bury distribution lines along Shire Rings Road when feasible. I mentioned that previously, that we would keep an eye on that. And again, I would just remind everyone that burial of distribution is also a matter of priority, and it's also, for this council, I think, a matter of fairness, because you have a number of residential neighborhoods who are impacted and affected also by above-ground distribution lines, probably an as bad or worse scenario than this, that you would, over time, need to take a look at and how you budget for and how you prioritize and do that. But again, you know, we've been known to bury these when opportunities present themselves, be it private development, public development, or public right-of-way improvements. So that's something we should definitely keep our eye on and keep in contact with the residents on. So having said all that, that is, that is staff's recommendation, and we're seeking your guidance tonight on how you want to proceed.
Very good. Thank you. We have, it looks like some folks signed in and struck their name out, so I have three that did not strike their name. We'll take those three, and then if anyone else would like to speak, we'll certainly provide the opportunity for that. But on our sign-up sheet, we have David Herman. So please come forward. Everyone that comes forward, if you could please state your name and address into the record, we need those to record tonight's happenings.
David Herman, 5989 Barron's Court Way, 904 feet from Shire Rings. And I have my badge. Item F, just very brief. During my military service, I learned to evaluate all decisions very clearly, just like an eye test. Is it better or worse? During my career as a high school teacher, everything was the same way. Is it going to be better or worse for my students after this is done? While I appreciate, I don't speak for anyone else, but while I appreciate the fact that there will not be 90-foot poles with transmission lines running down Shire Rings, that never happened. So if we're going to compare with the eye test, we're comparing 40-some-odd-foot distribution lines that I can see from my driveway to 40-foot distribution lines and 65-foot transmission lines. In the better or worse test, that's worse. So to add some incentive to item F, the only thing you can really do to improve the situation in Ballantrey, the real one, not the one that didn't happen, the only thing you can do to improve the situation in the greater Ballantrey community is bury those lines. Otherwise, we are sightline to the north has gotten worse. Not as bad as it would have been with the 90-footers, but it has gotten worse. That said, since I voted for Ms. Fox, thank you for representing us, for hanging in on this entire, I suppose it was necessary conversation to move from where I entered it in August to where it looks like it will end up, and I will appreciate you continuing to look at item F to make sure that when this is done, we will be proud of what we did and not thinking we settled for something less than was possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next, we have a Christian Cooney.
Christian Cooney, 5835 Barron's Court Way. First, just want to thank Dana and confirm that everything that he put up on the slide is consistent with the discussion that we had last Thursday night with himself and with, and with council, some with Kathy and Jane on the council. The other thing we'd like to highlight is, we are very concerned with the timing and the planning around the landscape improvements. Frankly, a lot of neighbors feel that we stepped down by not continuing to press for the buried transmission lines. And there's a little bit of history I'd like to put in context. When Shire Rings Road, we saw the development and Councilman Jane, Fox came out and spoke at our annual meeting, we were anticipating, when we saw Shire Rings Road on the CIP, that we would be seeing landscape improvements along that stretch of Shire Rings Road, and we would be seeing the burial of the distribution lines. When we went to the meeting, frankly, the only thought thing that I thought that we were going to have to press for was to maybe look at a, you know, four-to-six-foot berm to help block some lights and some road noise from the residents in the lakes. What we came to find out was that that plan had been scrapped altogether and that all of those funds were being redirected to support University Boulevard. So the sense in the community is that those, those lines were going to be buried until the road got redirected. And again, there's a, there's a good argument to be made for redirecting the road away from the neighborhood anyway. But we would like to, like to have a detailed plan with the city on how we do the landscape improvements and to include both the stretch on Shire Rings Road between Shire Rings Road and the Cosgrave Ditch, and how we put in some robust landscaping there to help, help block some of the views from the residents. I'm particularly concerned with the four homes on the closest on Barron's Court Way to Shire Rings Road, as they are going to be the most impacted. They're well within 1,000 feet of those power lines, and landscape relief to block, to improve sightlines would be much appreciated. We will, I am going to approach the HOA's board to get some funds to, for us to get a professional landscape architect involved, to work with, hopefully, the city's landscape architect, so we can define the functional specs of what we're looking for from that overall plan in that area, and then have them work as professionals, professional professional to meet the functional spec. So the city wouldn't be dealing with a bunch of residents who, who have a lot of great creative ideas that may be highly impractical. But we'd like to, like to get that on the calendar as rapidly as possible for the community. So thank you.
Mr. Cooney, I might recommend, we have a beautify-your-neighborhood grant program through the city where we do matching funds for landscape improvements and things. So when you hire your architect and you start looking at those things, please reach out, and we will extend to you the opportunity for beautify-your-neighborhood grants too, and perhaps it's something we could partner together with in that fashion.
Absolutely, absolutely. But what we would like to do is to have that landscape architect specifically focused on how to maximize the benefit of the city's investment in that landscaping easements, both around Shire Rings Farm, around the berm on the service center, on the city's property to the south, to the southwest of Shire Rings and Iderman, and to the city's property between the new, the relocated Cosgrave Ditch and Shire Rings Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a Chris Taggison.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Chris Taggison, and I'm, we're at 5985 Trafalgar Court, so we're on the corner of Trafalgar Court and Trafalgar Lane, so we see the entranceway that we were talking about from our front porch, and we sit out there almost every night when the weather's nice. So it means a lot to us that we're looking at the beautification of that area, but more importantly, for the entire neighborhood to not have the lines going all the way down Shire Rings. So I thank you all for looking at all the different possibilities that were out there. I think we all learned a lot more about power lines than we ever wanted to. But I do think that the option, the third option, right? We wanted it by 33, we wanted it buried, but the third option, I think, is a good compromise. And so I thank you. I think Jane, the first time I met you, was at my front door, and we both talked about how this was important to us, and you've been at every meeting that we've been at, and so I appreciate your concern and listening to us, even when we might not have always been agreeable. So I wanted to thank you about all of that. So I do think that that is the best way to go. It's a tough business that you're in. You've got a lot of people to make happy, and being in the business of making everyone happy is a tough business to be in. So I want to thank you for that. And Dana, last week, that yellow line was a little bit longer, so I want to thank you for making that line a little bit shorter, because fewer people will then see that. So I think that, I think what we have there is, is the best of both. We all bought that, our property, knowing that that land was not developed. So I have to remind ourselves of that. We did that. But we also bought knowing that Dublin does a really good job of taking care of their own. So I really appreciate you doing that, and thank you. I just, I think it was great the way that you let everyone be here. So thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, there are some folks that struck their name, but I do want to open up the floor and give it an opportunity for anyone who has not yet spoken, if they choose to, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized, to come forward. Going once, going twice? Not sold anyone in a green hat? Okay. Well, we will open up for council discussion then and feedback, so that we can give staff the directive of moving forward with the Siding Board. Comments from?
No, I think, I'm glad we've all come to somewhat of an agreement, and I think it's, thank you for going through the effort of hiring your own landscape architect and working with our landscape architect, because I think you're going to be surprised, from a professional standpoint, as a landscape architect, I can't work for you, by the way, but I think you're going to be surprised at the quality of the product that's going to come out from this effort. And, you know, because these are the kind of guys that are trained in these kind of visual aspects of vertical height and with, as related to plant material. So I think you're going to be probably pleasantly surprised, and I think we're all in agreement, aren't we not, in assisting them in this? So thank you for making that effort and that suggestion.
Any other comments?
Well, it's really difficult sometimes when we get faced with a dilemma that none of us want to get faced with, and the transmission line was that dilemma. I think all of us wishes that all the transmissions line and every distribution line and every telephone line was underground, and I wish we could do that. But I come away from this feeling really good about one particular thing, and that is that we came together in a participatory fashion. I call it participatory government, where we battled with an issue that was difficult. We represent the residents, and that's a responsibility of coming together. Sometimes, we get a lot of green hats in the audience, a lot of green hats, but what we also get is a lot of perspective, and we got a lot of collaboration, and we got a lot of research, and we brought it together around a table, around a neighborhood, in the city hall chambers, and we came up with a solution that is not maybe the very best, but it is a good solution. And I just want to thank the residents. Getting involved in your neighborhood and talking about the problems and calling your city council members and writing your emails and doing your research is hard work. It really is hard work. But what it does is it brings together the very best solution possible, and it's one that I hope we can walk away with and say that, you know, we did our very best at it. And I think that's government at its best, I really do. And so I thank you all for the work that you put into it. I thank you all for your emails. I thank you all for the comments and the honest opinions you've given, the criticisms as well as the compliments, and I hope that we continue to do that with everything that comes across our table. So, thank you again.
Okay. Well, we want to go ahead and, what do you need us to do?
Well, I guess I would ask for motion, I guess in support of what we presented, both in terms of the, oops, wrong way, this slide, the graphic, in support of this graphic and all that that entails, as well as this list, as well as this list. And I will acknowledge Mr. Cooney's request, you know, regarding ongoing discussion about other landscaping along Shire Rings Road. Obviously, it's not something I could sit here and commit to without knowing that answer, but happy to work with them on that. And if there are implications for the city to participate in some way, then those would get presented as part of budget discussions.
So you would have us do a recommendation for Route Number Three and affirm the residents' requests, A through F?
Correct.
Okay. With that said, Jane, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Route Number Three, and then we have to wait for the second motion, don't we? Or no? Can we make it?
We can do it by one.
No, she says we have to wait.
You can combine it.
Oh, we can combine it. All right. And then also that we, that we
Confirm the residents' request.
Confirm the residents' request.
A through F.
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
I'm Mayor Ambrose Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yep.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Very good. Well, thank you all for coming, and as Jane said, it really, when we work together, you know, there's no I in team, so go get them. But thanks for your participation. And unless you feel compelled to stay for the balance of our very intriguing council meeting, it's really all even, huh? Okay. But thank you again for coming and have a wonderful night.
Yeah.
We had no one sign in for, nobody signed in for citizen comments?
I'll call for them. Thanks so much. If you could take your conversations into the hallway, that'll help us wrap up the balance of our meeting this evening.
Break out the champagne.
Okay. We'll move on to citizen comments. We did not have anyone sign in for citizen comments, but certainly do not want to preclude someone if they did not see the sign-in sheet. So is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak to anything that is not on tonight's agenda in our open citizen comment forum? Hearing, none. We will move on to the consent agenda. There are two items on our consent agenda, and hearing, no request to remove an item is their motion to approve the actions for the two items on the consent agenda, being the meeting minutes of the work session of November 18th and of our council meeting on January the 6th.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Ann, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Ambrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second reading for Ordinance 01-20.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Ohio Medical Transportation, Inc., to induce it to lease or purchase a facility to expand its office and associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Very good. Rachel is going to be presenting to us this evening, so please, take it away.
Very good. Good evening, members of city council. There have been no changes since the first reading on January 6th. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. We also have representatives of the company, MedFlight, with us this evening, including the president and CEO. Otherwise, if there are no questions, staff recommends passage of this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Would Mr. Allenstein like to come forward and share with us a few thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name's Tom Allenstein. I'm the president and CEO of MedFlight. MedFlight, for those of you that don't know us, we're a 501(c)(3).
Thank you, members of the council. My name's Tom Allenstein. I'm the president, CEO of MedFlight. MedFlight, for those of you that don't know us, we're a 501(c)(3). We are a consortium model medical transportation company. We are jointly owned by Ohio Health and the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center. We came into being in about 1995. So, this year, we will be celebrating our 25th anniversary of service to the citizens of Ohio. We consist of nine helicopter bases throughout Ohio, one of those being shared with a company, competitor, actually, out of West Virginia. And then we have four ground critical care ambulance bases through Ohio. We do about 5,000 to 6,000 transports a year transporting these citizens. In 2010, MedFlight partnered with a company out of Detroit, Michigan, to form a ground ALS, BLS, Advanced Life Support, Basic Life Support ambulance company called MedCare. We were a majority owner, MedFlight being a majority owner, and, and this business out of Detroit was a minority owner. And this year, we are pursuing the total takeover of that company. As that happens, we find our needs to grow. And one of those needs is we have a communication center. This is a center where all calls and requests for services come in for our service. And right now, that location, that, that facility is located at the north end of Don Scott Airport. We are looking at moving that to your beloved city of Dublin. We know that we need to have an area that is rich with IT infrastructure. Dublin meets that need for us. We want to grow and, and continue to see that business grow because we not only perform that communication center services for MedFlight and soon, MedCare, but we also do provide those services to a company out of South Bend, Indiana, Toledo, and another company here in, in Columbus. And we want to continue to grow those opportunities as people need that. And so, we are looking at a couple of different properties primarily in, in the Dublin city area. And, and we know that this is a right place for us. And we look forward to potentially partnership with the city on, on moving those.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from council? No? I would like, great, thank you so much. Would like to open up for public comment. Is there anyone present this evening from the general public that would like to speak with respect to this legislative item? Hearing none, we'll move forward. So, I, I know on those 5,000 to 6,000 folks that you service every year, you're encountering them on some of their worst days. So, that is a great act of compassion and a fantastic service that I'm sure has saved countless lives in your 25 years of doing business. So, okay, any other comments from council? No? We'll vote on the ordinance.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes. Real to have you. Yeah.
Yes, well, welcome to Dublin. Thank you so much. Okay, we have some first readings and introductions. The first is Ordinance Number 02-20.
Accepting the annexation of 11 plus or minus acres from Washington Township to the city of Dublin.
Very good, we have a
Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. And Jennifer is going to present to us this evening.
Good evening. On September 23rd, 2019, city council approved two resolutions related to the annexation before you tonight. The first was a statement of services resolution. And the second one was a resolution providing for buffers for any potential incompatible land uses. The Franklin County Commissioners approved the annexation on October 22nd, finding that all the Ohio Revised Code requirements have been met. The annexation is now before you tonight for acceptance. And we have a slide that depicts where this property is along Shire Rings Road. This property is within the proposed annexation areas of the community plan and is located in the exclusive Dublin service area as defined in the water and sewer service agreements with the city of Columbus. Staff therefore recommends approval of Ordinance 2-20 at the second reading on February 10th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions from council?
I have one, Jennifer. I think I read in here somewhere where that resolution required a zoning buffer.
So
Explain that.
Yeah, this is an expedited type 2 annexation, which is, one, we don't see very many of them because we only accept annexations on expedited type 2 when they come from Washington Township. And this is in Washington Township. Under the Ohio Revised Code, it requires you to provide a statement saying that we will allow for those buffers. But in this situation, the property, when it's annexed to Dublin, it's automatically rezoned to the rural district. And so, they all have to come through for rezoning if they want to do anything with that property. And it's of my understanding that they intend to come in for rezoning to plan development.
Okay, so, in that case, that doesn't, and the reason I ask this is because if it was required zoning buffer, then does planning and zoning need to take that into consideration when they review the preliminary development plan?
So, that's only required when there are incompatible land uses.
Okay.
So, because this will be residential and is surrounding residential, the buffer is not necessary.
Thank you.
Good. Other questions? No? Okay, is there anyone present this evening from the general public that would like to speak with respect to this ordinance? Hearing none. We look forward to a second hearing on February the 10th and make, make a decision at that time. Next, we have Ordinance 03-20.
Petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Union County, Ohio, to adjust the boundary lines of Jerome Township so as to include the territory, which as a result of annexation, now lies within the corporate boundaries of the city of Dublin.
Need introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Again, Jennifer, you're on that seat here.
Good evening. Yeah. In order to ensure that fire service remains consistent throughout the city, it's been Dublin's past practice to file boundary adjustment petitions to transfer any land annexed from Jerome Township into Washington Township. Ordinance 3-20 would authorize the law department to petition the Union County Commissioners to adjust the boundaries for the Darshan Shaw property on Highland Creek Road and the Washington Township property on the Kitrick Road. And those are both illustrated in the slide we have up there. The Shaw property is in the lower, the middle in green, lower side of the slide. And the Washington Township property is in the top right portion of the slide. The Ohio Revised Code and case law provide the city with authority to file these petitions and require Board of County Commissioner approval. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 3-20 at the second reading on February 10th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Council questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak with respect to this ordinance? Hearing none. We will look forward to this again on February 10th for a second reading as well. Next, we have Ordinance 04-20.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $20 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal parks and recreation system by, A, constructing the Riverside Crossing Park, and B, reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, equipping, and furnishing the Dublin Community Pool North Complex, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
Any introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Stifler?
Good evening, council. Ordinances 4 and 5-20 authorize the issuance of $20.0 million in bonds as previously approved in the 2019 and 2020 CIPs. The financing team for this sale is essentially the same as the prior bond offering in 2018. The city has retained Baker Tilly as our municipal advisor. Formerly, they were known as UMBah. Also, continuing to serve as our bond counsel is Squire Patton and Boggs, and specifically Chris Franzman. The sale of these bonds is divided into two ordinances to reflect the multiple purposes of the bond offering. The first ordinance, 4-20, provides funding for up to $20 million for the park-related capital improvements, including the Riverside Crossing Park and the North Pool. Ordinance 05-20 provides funding for up to $6 million for the sanitary sewer-related improvements, including the Bright Road sanitary sewer extension, sewer lining and repairs, and the Deer Run Sewer upsizing. The size of the bond issuance is based on the previously awarded contracts and the legislation approved by city council, specifically the last two CIPs. The proceeds will be used to repay the $15.5 million advance from the city's general fund that occurred last December. The bonds will be structured similarly to previous bond offerings, that is, 20-year level debt service with a 10-year call. And the bonds are being issued in compliance with the city's debt policy. The financing timeline is, the first hearing is obviously tonight. On February 4th, we will have a ratings call with all three rating agencies. February 10th, we will approve, recommend approval of the bonds at the ordinances at the second hearing. After the 30-day waiting period, we will price the bonds on March 12th, and the bonds will expect to be closed on April 2nd. So, we should see that fund balance back up by the end of April. Our recommendation is that you approve these ordinances at the second hearing on February 10th.
Very good, thank you. Questions from council?
I had one question. Matt, thanks so much. I appreciate in the write-up that you put forward, we had talked about some debt metrics and you provided for this. And I, I think that was very helpful, so thanks a lot. On metric number three, I did have a question.
Sure.
It's the only no we see anywhere on the, on the write-up. Could you share a little bit about that? And I'm assuming this is a bit about what we talked about at the end of last year and that when the bonds are issued, we will, we will find a yes there. But could you share a little bit about that, please?
That's correct. The, the issue is really with the $15.5 million advance, I don't think it's fair to say that our fund balance is either the 49.9 or the 65.4. It's both of them, and they're both equally true at the same time. So, I attempted, because these metrics utilize a fund balance, to use both. So, the really, the real issue here is by advancing that money in December, we had a drop in the fund balance on a real basis from the previous year. Once that advance is repaid, the fund balance becomes what you see in 3A. So, I wanted to present both sides of the story because I think they're both equally valid. And to omit one would be to omit part of the story.
And it was my recollection, I think, it, it, part of the conversation was we found ourselves in the situation where we don't have necessarily timeframe for which we will repay those bonds, is the conversation. So, this timeline, we're saying it's now April. Provided the rest of the year goes, we'll find ourselves back there. I think the finance committee said that one of the conversations is to, to take back and have a conversation about, is there a window around which that refunding would have to be? So, for instance, let's just say something should happen. The bond market goes to the, to a point where we might not want to replenish because of the price we have to pay for those bonds, et cetera, so forth. So, I think it finds ourselves, and maybe we hadn't been there before, these are new metrics. But I think the finance committee, I'm looking at the chair here, to just have a conversation to see that we have the language so that we don't have to do both and, we can have a solid yes based on a metric or, or no based on a metric that, that we put forward.
Yeah, you're kind of stealing the thunder there, girl.
Oh, okay.
I'm just totally teasing you, yeah. We, and when we do committee reports, I'll get a little bit general level, but I'll get a little bit
Okay, so that's the thing. And I just appreciate the explanation of that there, so, thank you, Matt.
Sure.
I had the same question. I couldn't figure out the difference between 3 and 3A, but you answered that. The percentages, the change in general fund balance, it's going down. 36, 27, 15, 11, 6. Were there one timers in 2019 that were outside the norm that would have caused that decrease?
There were one-time costs in 2018. I would not necessarily say that they were identified. The one-time costs in 2018 were capital improvement, capital asset expenditures. We spent about $6 million in general fund money on property purchases.
Okay.
That did not occur in 2019.
Okay.
There are always one-time issues, but a series of one-time issues becomes a pattern. So, I'm, I'm hesitant to say that there was anything that I would specifically call out in 2019.
So, the land at Franz and Winter Temple, was that paid for in 2019 or 2018?
2018.
Okay. So, I guess, just looking at the numbers, I'm curious why there's, they're pretty consistently on a downward trend.
I'll get, I'll get you some more information on that, some more specifics.
Okay.
Kind of looking at that trend.
Are there questions, comments from council? So, I, I read through this, and I didn't see anything about callable bonds, but I heard you say that this evening. So, can you tell me a little bit about what you're thinking, how you'll go to market on that, and what that might do, the cost of bonds, and what our options might be in that 10-year timeframe?
Sure. If you, if you'd like a lot of detail on that, I'm happy to bring in our municipal advisor at the second hearing. I asked them the same kind of question about the callable nature. Basically, a 10-year call is pretty standard. You're not going to save anything. And you might even get questions, like, why aren't you issuing a standard 10-year call if you didn't? So, not only would you probably not save money, you might actually create more uncertainty in your bond offering by not having a standard 10-year call. That's kind of the rationale for offering it at this point.
And is there a penalty associated with calling it the 10 years only?
No, everybody kind of expects a 20-year bond to have that 10-year call. That's the, that's the standard municipal bond.
Because many of our bonds, you know, when we did that exercise, were not callable.
Right. It, it, it depends upon the project. With some of the bonds that we issued with regard to Bridge Street, we did negotiated sales because we had earlier calls and different levels. So, this is a very standard bond offering, and that's why the call option is as it is.
Okay, very good. Anything else from council?
With that offer, to maybe have the experts come in and just give us an update on what's going on in the bond market? I think this is always a good opportunity to do that, if that, you mentioned that that might be available, if everyone thinks that would be a good
Yeah, we can do that at, at the finance committee as well and issue a report if you want. If you guys are interested, then we could do it at a, oh my goodness, the word, a workshop.
I wasn't necessarily, I was just
They just want to have them come and do a general Yeah, we can have them come in and do a general presentation to council if you want. It's all good, either way.
Current environment, what are current rates, that sort of thing.
I think we've had them do that before, haven't we? I think we have.
I recall.
Yeah, I think generally, they, they've been here on a second, second reading to, to answer those kind of questions. And so, we'll, we'll have them here in the next meeting.
Good, I do want to take a moment for public comment, if anyone like, would like to speak with respect to this ordinance. Hearing none. We will look forward to hearing that again for a second hearing on February 10th. Thank you, Matt, for your attention to that. So, the next is Ordinance 05-20.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount of $6 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal sanitary sewer system by extending certain sewer lines, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Stifler?
Same presentation as the previous ordinance.
Now, the, the payments for these are going to be from the sewer fund largely, where the payment repayment from the previous was the general fund.
Correct. There, there isn't, they, they are specified to be paid from sewer revenues. We are evaluating the sewer revenue, the sewer fund's ability to support these bonds, and that report will be forthcoming. That was noted in the 2020, 2024 CIP that the plan is to pay for these with sewer revenue. But to the extent that the sewer fund cannot support these, general fund or CIP dollars may be utilized. And that's a decision that we'll all look at too as we get closer to the 2021 CIP and the water sewer rate study results.
Will you have that analysis done prior to the February 10th meeting?
I will not, but we will have it prior to when we need to start paying for these bonds. We might not know the exact mechanism by which we'll use, but that's not necessarily unusual. We typically pay the first, plan for the first issuance of bonds out of the revenue source that we expect, and then it can typically change. Usually, we plan for income tax, and we end up supporting them with TIF revenue or something of that nature. So, that's not necessarily unusual. But we will have the results of that and a plan moving forward before we make a payment.
Perhaps you could just outline that in maybe an addendum to the staff report prior to our February 10th, so that it's documented that we're going to be having that conversation moving forward.
Sure.
moving forward.
Sure.
Any other council? Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak with respect to this ordinance? Hearing none. Very good. We will see that back for a second reading on February the 10th as well. Okay, on to resolutions. Resolution 04-20.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for public health and plumbing services with the Board of Health of the Franklin County General Health District for 2020.
Good, an introduction. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you, members of council. As you're aware, the Franklin County Public Health Department serves as the city's health agency, and they provide general health services as well as, they also provide our plumbing, plan review, and plumbing inspection services as well. This is really a continuation of the contract that we've had previously. It just reflects the increase of cost. You'll note in the staff report that, and I also attached information where the Franklin County Board of Health had approved a 3.02% increase over the 2019 per capita amount for 2020. This effectively increases the cost of the contract from $442,657.36 in upcoming in 2020, from the $417,585 in 2019. You may also be aware, at least most of you, that the mosquito control services, they also provide that as well contractually, but that's handled separately from this contract. Staff recommends council's approval of this resolution.
Very good. Questions, comments?
I do. You know, we're all pretty aware of some of the things that you spoke about, but I noticed in the scope of services, that there were a variety of other things. And I'm just curious, like emergency services, emergency preparedness, community outreach, injury prevention, community health action teams, farm-to-school program, there's all kinds of things there that, you know, that they offer. And I'm not aware, probably because I'm not in the loop, about all the little ways that they come and help us here at Dublin, but I was wondering, you know, can you tell us a little bit about those other services they offer? Or can we take advantage of the services that maybe we haven't asked for in the past?
No, they provide the full package of services available from a health department. So everything from immunization to education to outreach, again, the plumbing services is something they do. They also have been involved in helping us to assess, in conjunction with Franklin County Water and Soil and Water.
Conservation.
Conservation District. They also have helped assess onsite treatment systems, household treatment systems and the like. So they provide the full range of health-related services. As it relates to emergency management, they're in charge of the overall pandemic response plan, which in fact, we just had training on emergency management this last week and we talked about that. So it's a very broad range of services that they provide.
And the reason I bring that up is because I think a lot of times, people think of the Franklin County Public Health as maybe being Columbus and Metro located, and a lot of times, I think our own residents don't realize that the Franklin County Public Health do a lot of things here. And I just, you know, in reading this, I don't think it's very apparent, but they're there out in the communities, I guess is what I'm saying, or we're seeing them.
Thanks for bringing that up. There is sometimes confusion between Columbus, City of Columbus has its own health department, and then the county has one, and this county one generally serves most all the suburbs and townships within Franklin County.
Great, thanks Dana.
Any other comments, discussion? I'd like to open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to speak with respect to this resolution? Hearing none. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
I would add, maybe, is that in our Tier Two turf levels, we don't provide any fertilization. Only the Tier One gets three fertilizations a year, Tier Two and Three, and then the native grasses don't receive any type of fertilization. And I think that's something we probably might want to look at, maybe not every year, but maybe every other year. I understand the runoff concerns. But for turf that's mowed weekly, to not have any nutrition provided is probably going to make it in a state of decline over time. So that would be my only recommendation, that we look at those specifications in subsequent years.
Will do.
Okay, anything else from council? No, is there anyone present from the general public that would like to speak to this resolution this evening? Hearing none. Ann, please call the roll.
Sheriff Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Very good, Resolution 07-20.
Authorizing the lowest and best bid for the 2020 South Landscape Maintenance, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for said services.
Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Anything different on this, Matt?
Nothing different. This is for Rocky Fork Company with the lowest bid of $189,307. Rocky Fork is also found, we have found their work to be acceptable and recommend approval.
Council questions, comments? Anyone from the general public like to comment? Hearing none. Ann, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Resolution 08-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2020 Central Landscape Maintenance, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for said services.
I'll introduce it.
Very good.
Again, nothing different. This is for environmental management services with a low bid of $210,594. Again, we have a good track record with EMS and recommend approval.
Very good. Council questions? I would think in your unit price replacements, this is probably going to be where the bulk of those unit prices might be assigned.
Yes.
Where we've had the most fatalities. So did we, did you feel like all of those prices were, are we replacing like for like or are we trying to do something different in those failures?
We are replacing like with like unless there's a reason for us not to. And then we also have the planting requirements, specifications that coincide with that.
Very good, thank you. Anything else from council? Public comment? Anyone like to speak with respect to this resolution? Hearing none. Ann, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
And Resolution 09-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2020 Facilities Landscape Maintenance, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for said services.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Matt.
Again, no other changes except this is for the actual city-owned property, or city-owned buildings and the surrounding landscape. The low bid came back with Commercial Land Management Systems with $110,000. Again, city staff has worked with CLMS for some time and find their work acceptable and recommend approval.
Very good, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. Public comment? Anyone like to speak with respect to this resolution? Hearing none. Ann, please call the roll.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes. Resolution 10-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2020 I-270-33 Landscape Maintenance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for said services.
I'll introduce it.
Introduction. Thank you, Ms. Aludo. Matt?
Again, no changes. This is a contract for Muirfield Landscape Maintenance and will actually be awarded to Muirfield Association to put that back into their hands. They are the low bidder at $114,229. We've been in direct contact with the manager of the association, Maintenance Association, and find their work acceptable.
Very good. We have two members that would like to make comments.
We'd like, yeah, I'd like to abstain because I'm on the Muirfield Board, so.
I will abstain because my husband's on the Muirfield.
Very good, thank you.
I'll introduce that legislation.
Thank you.
Christina.
And, I'm sorry, what title was read?
I think it makes some confusion here. 10?
10.
Resolution 10-20, yeah, there's some confusion.
This is not the Muirfield.
This is not the Muirfield one.
Right, this is the 270-33?
That's 11-20, yeah.
Let's move ahead. Let's go ahead and we'll take them out of order. Let's go ahead and get Resolution 11-20. Greg will introduce it.
Matt, would you please give the staff report?
I'm sorry, are we looking for the Muirfield?
Yes.
Okay, so the Muirfield contract would be awarded to the Muirfield Association for We have been in contact with the manager of the Maintenance Association and find their work acceptable.
Very good, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Public testimony? Anyone like to? Hearing none. Ann, which please call the roll.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Okay, we'll jump back to 10-20.
And this is?
Resolution 10-20.
10-20 is the Muirfield one. 10-20 is the Muirfield one.
On my paperwork, it is listed as 11-20.
You're looking at the one on the screen? Board pack is different.
Board pack's different from what the agenda is here.
So I'd say you go with that.
Right.
We will go with the printed one. This will be Resolution 10-20 and it'll be accepting the lowest and best bid for the I-270-33 Landscape Maintenance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with said services.
I can introduce that one.
Very good, thank you. Matt, so forth.
Again, no other changes. This contract would be awarded to Commercial Land Management Systems for the amount of the low bid of $75,000. Again, CLMS has a good track record with the city and recommend approval.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments from council? So we had, in these five packages, we had four different awardees. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Good, that's kind of interesting.
That's partially by design. One of the reasons we've increased or added another layer to the package was we were finding that some of the landscape companies were a little bit too thin and couldn't keep up with the work. So we added yet another layer in hopes that we would concentrate the work.
So for these, were they primary, the, I know that the boundaries changed some, but are this year's, this three-year section similar contractors to the previous years or have they switched around quite a bit?
Well, they've switched around a little bit because we added yet some more areas to, you know, to work in. I could run you that report if you'd like.
That's okay.
Off the top of my head, I don't know which one switched where, but yeah.
They would just have the best historical data of the cost if they had, you know, performed the service before and those would probably be helpful numbers to know. But I'm certain you did all of those exercises. Very good. Anyone present this evening that would like to speak with respect to this resolution? Hearing none. Ann, please call the roll.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes. Very good, thank you. Our next will be Resolution 12-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners for the administration of Wireless 911 Government Assistant Funds.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Jay, Mr. Somerall, thank you.
Good evening, members of council. It's good to be in front of you. This resolution is one that you see every January. It allows the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners for the purposes of receiving dispersed funding from the local government Wireless Assistance Fund. That's the 25 cents a month that is charged to all cellphone users in the state of Ohio for the purposes of Wireless 911. Dublin is one of four funded PSAPs under the formula and, under the budget approved by the 911 Planning Committee, Dublin will be receiving again $130,000 this year for the answering of Wireless 911 calls.
Very good, thank you. Council questions, comments? Public comment? Hearing none. Ann, which please call the roll.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Next, Resolution 13-20.
Affirming Dublin's commitment to achieving and maintaining pay equity with city personnel.
I'll introduce it.
Very good.
And I will hand this over to our Human Resource Director, Jennifer Miglietti.
Hello.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of council. Resolution of 13-20 pertains to Dublin's commitment to pay equity. The City of Dublin has long supported the concept of pay equality and equity.
The microphone. Is the button lit?
Okay, should I start over?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. The resolution of 13-20 pertains to Dublin's commitment to pay equity. The City of Dublin has long supported the concept of pay equality and equity and has been proactive in putting systems in place that eliminate gender bias during the hiring process and during our annual evaluation period. In response to the City of Columbus and Mayor Ginther's invitation, the City of Dublin pledges our commitment to pay equality. Staff recommends approval of this resolution and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Council questions, comments?
A comment, I appreciate it. How long have we had this practice in place to look at pay equity?
Since 2007, so quite some time. We've been very proactive and very forward-thinking.
And I appreciate that a lot because it's wonderful to be, to be ahead of really an important metric in management, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Anyone from the general public like to speak with respect to this resolution? Hearing none. Ann, which please call the roll.
Sheriff Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Very good on items under other designation of the clerk of council's public records
training designee for council. I make a motion to designate the clerk of council as the public records training designee for council. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Ann, please call the roll.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
For this next action, I will need to recuse myself. I have a family member who is employed at the organization that's subject to matter of this, so Mr. DeRosa will take this.
Dana.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm requesting that this be removed from the table and placed on your next council agenda, next council agenda for February 10th for your consideration.
Great. Do we have a motion to remove from the table and schedule ordinance 34-19 for the February 10th, 2020 council meeting agenda?
So moved. I second.
Ann, please.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to staff comments.
Just a couple items. Just want to announce or reiterate, because you heard it in the public, that we will be dedicating the pedestrian bridge on March 13th. Very exciting to, very excited to do that and more information will be published about all the different activities that will happen with that event. Also, just to remind council regarding bridge naming, not to put you on the spot or suggest you have to do that tonight, but if there are thoughts on that or any way ahead regarding that, we certainly welcome your guidance on that and that's all I have for tonight.
Good, so we did receive communication of, short list of names that were suggested by staff. I know that Dana asked for a little bit of feedback on that, so I wanted to take a few moments so that we could have that discussion, so that we could provide feedback to let staff know where we are in that decision-making process and where we are headed from here. So I'd like to open up for public, or for council comments, as I'm sure you all saw the list and have some thoughts of your own you'd like to bring forward. Anyone like to lead that charge?
I'd be happy to make a comment. I very much appreciate, the hardest thing is building the bridge, the second hardest thing is sometimes naming the bridge. So I appreciate that that's always a difficult thing and that work. As we looked at the options, one of the things that I wanted to bring forth, I think it's important that we have agreement somewhat on the criteria because the naming of itself is sometimes difficult. And from my perspective, I think one of the important criteria is that we're sure that whatever name associates itself very strongly with Dublin, that we don't want this to be necessarily the Central Ohio Bridge, we want this to be the Dublin Bridge. So one of the considerations as we look at the name that I think is pretty important that somewhere in that Dublin or a name that, or some sort of affiliation that was strongly tied to Dublin is part of that naming. So as we, you know, finalize that, that would be a consideration that I think is particularly important because it will be iconic, it will be associated with this community and I think in the name, it's important that we, that we tie that together as tight as we can. So I would offer that as a consideration in the naming choices.
And another consideration along those same lines is, you know, it is a connector, a link, and I think it's very important that somehow, I don't know how it happens, but that's worked in with the Dublin name to signify that this is tying together two sides of the river and our community. So I hope somehow that possibly that works into the name also.
I agree with Councilmember Reiner. Link, connector, they're, they sound progressive. It does connect old with new. I think a word that a lot of people associate with Dublin is emerald. There are a lot of emeralds around Dublin, though. My only concern with using that word is that folks might get confused and maybe it's overplayed.
So I'm going to throw out another, another option. I agree with all of these, so I'm going to throw out one other, though. And looking at, and Googling, we all Google, Googling global iconic bridges, many of them speak to the place. Many of them speak to the shape. And eventually, when they're identified by people outside of the area, it's because of one of those things. They're either going to the place, like the London Bridge, or they're talking about the shape or its meaning, like the Hay Penny Bridge in Ireland because of the way it came about, you had to pay a half a penny to get across. One of the things that I struggle with on this one is, is that this is such a architecturally significant design and that is what makes it unusual in that it look, when you look at it, it's an S-shaped bridge, there are no others like it. It has this wonderful sculptural middle that looks like a needle and the eye of a needle stretching through it. And I wonder if you didn't care about it being Dublin and you didn't care about it being a link, what would everybody else look at that bridge and think? Would they think, wow? And would they then give it a name? And would they remember it because of its design? So I would throw out the other option, that the bridge speaks to that. Like, is it the Dublin Eye Bridge? The Dublin Emerald Eye Bridge? Or the, or Crossing? Because it's a pedestrian crossing, it's not a vehicular bridge. So if someone comes looking for a bridge and they want to drive their car across it, they're not going to be able to do that. So I'm just throwing out the option that you think about the uniqueness of the bridge and is that what people will remember and come to see? And that, the name speaks to that. So I don't have a particular name, but the eye came across because I see that as visionary, you know, and the bridge stretches through it and connects. So those are just my thoughts.
That's a good point, really.
Is it too late, is it too late, Dana, to do like a naming, competition's not the right word, but solicitation, whatever? Is it too late to try to pull that off before March 13th?
No.
It's just as nice as.
I'm looking for help, but I'm not getting it. I would.
You're on an island, aren't you?
Doing the eyeball.
The general turns around and the army is gone.
I would say we could, you know, with, today with social media and all, we could, we could make just about anything like that happen. I would, I would suggest.
The list that we did see, there was nothing, and it's a perfectly good, appropriate list, but it's almost like selection by elimination. I'm like, well, that one's no good, that one's no good. And you end up with Emerald Crossing. And you're like, well, we got Emerald Campus, we got Emerald the Road, you know, Parkway. So I don't know, I just don't know that I've seen it yet, although I don't know what it is. But I think you're toying with good ideas over there, Jane, about the eye of the needle and the future and the connection and all that. But there are just so many creative people in this community. Is there any way we could open this up even for like maybe just two weeks and say, and maybe we could get ahold and ask Doc Hodley to put something out to the schools? And, I mean, we should be able to get it. If we, if we try for two weeks, we're going to have more input than we do right now.
I would tend to agree.
I agree with you, Greg.
Because if we don't come up with a clever name, like Chris, you mentioned to me, it's going to name itself.
Yep.
It is going to, people are going to start, there is going to be something that sticks that the community starts calling it that.
And I think that it's very important, whatever name we select, it's a name that's usable, right? So if we call it the Dublin Emerald Crossing Through the Eye of the Needle, right?
Right.
Like, I can't see my son saying, hey, I'm going to meet my buddies down at the Dublin Crossing Emerald Eye of the Needle.
Well, no, but maybe it could be.
And we're going to go over to Killens and get ice cream. Like, that's not going to happen. It needs to be a name, like, I'm not suggesting the name be the link, but it needs to be something that can roll off someone's tongue and say, hey, I'll meet you on the west side of the link. Hey, I'll meet you, you know, whatever those kinds of things are. So I think it's important that, that the name does honor the place and honor the tradition and the shape and all of those things. But at the end of the day, it has to be a name that is used. So I think if we maybe frame it up to the community of this is the kind of criteria we're looking for in suggestions for a name, I, I agree with, you know, with Greg and all that we'll probably get some very creative, perhaps some funny, you know, options to consider.
You know, I'm just sort of curious, since Megan babysat this project for years and she's an engineer and she builds bridges. I'm just curious if she had any thoughts on this.
She may have some names you don't want to hear right now. Might not be, might not be a good time to ask.
Other than the Bridge of sorrow, the Bridge of complexity, the Bridge of tears, the Bridge of.
The Bridge of time I'll never get back.
So I'd be, Megan, I'd love to hear what you have to say sometime.
Can we put something together that we can get out there that goes the public's criteria that they can follow to Chris's point so that we can incorporate some of these ideas and some of these thoughts and allow some of those incredibly creative citizen minds out there to speak their piece about the name of the bridge?
By the end of the month.
By the end of the month.
We will do that, yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, anything else from staff comments? Is that all you had, Dana? I'll take that as a yes. Okay. What's that?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay. Okay, P and Z, Jane, do you have some council committee reports?
Yeah, a little bit. The, we've got a small group of commissioners, well, past commissioners. We've got a small group meeting on Friday morning to review some of the work that we're doing to try to improve the commission process, to make suggestions to council about expectations for council and choosing commission members and just, just trying to tighten up some of the things that we've recognized. And in doing that, and Jenny Roush, our planning director is attending that, following that meeting, we will then try to create an agenda and a facilitated work session with council here in mid-February. So I just want you to know that the progress of that is coming along pretty good and so we hope that we'll have a really effective and productive meeting in February, so.
Thank you. Okay, admin, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple things, I guess to piggyback off that, we have on the 27th of January interviews for openings on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the ARB. So I just want to remind folks that the deadline for applications is this Friday, the 24th, so please, interested, put in an application and for the rest of the group, we'll be considering those on the 27th. The second thing, one month from today or one month from yesterday, I guess, is our annual council retreat. I've had the opportunity to spend a few minutes with most of you to gather your thoughts and feedback on that, but very much appreciate that and we'll work to get an agenda, draft ideas out for consideration and to work with the clerk's office and staff on that over the next couple of weeks. So looking forward to that opportunity.
Very good, thank you. Community Development Committee, John.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, we had a meeting Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. Finance Committee, Christina.
Yeah, thank you. A few things. So I got an opportunity to meet with Matt, so he's going to work with Ann to get our meeting cadence on the schedule, so we'll get that all out to you as soon as we can. Some of the items on the agenda for the year will include some policy reviews. So Kathy, this is part of what I was talking about earlier in terms of looking at some of the metrics and having discussions around those, so that'll be a fun conversation. Looking at the bed tax grant review, sort of reviewing that process and the amount, we will put together a TIF performance summary and review, which I think will also be really helpful for the two new members on the committee. Debt issue calls and recommendations, taking a look at those, I think we discussed those actually a little earlier tonight as well. We'll review the Dublin Disabled Senior and Possible Workforce Circulator feasibility. That was sort of a leftover item from September, so we'll be taking a look at that as well. We'll also be regularly reviewing the quarterly financials, which of course are available to all of council as well. So if at any time you want us to bring something directly to council, or if you have questions that you want us to address at the committee level, either way is fine, just let me know, I'm happy to do that for you. We also have the budget and the CIP process. So I wanted to welcome my two new members of the committee. So thank you both for joining me. It's going to be an excellent year for us, and I'm really looking forward to it. So that's the plan for Finance Committee in a nutshell, very quickly.
Okay, very good, thank you. Public Services, Jane?
Working on getting our first meeting together. But the agenda for that first meeting, we'd like to cover, and Jennifer, I'll give you a call on this, is the property maintenance, the vacant house ordinance that would try to help us manage some of the vacant houses, the few that we have around here. And then also reviewing the mention that we made about commercial real estate signs that stay up forever. So that's the, the three items that we'll be talking about on the first Public Services.
Very good, thank you. Coda, Kathy?
No, nothing, thank you.
Friendship Association?
Yeah, we actually met this morning, so welcome Andy to that committee. It was, it's a fun committee. We welcome the Greater Columbus Sister Cities International Executive Director and the Program Manager to our meeting today. So the purpose of that is to really sort of restart conversations about how we might collaborate with them. They have 10 sister cities, and we have, none of those duplicated by our two friendship cities. And we have access to all of those cities in terms of collaboration, economic development possibilities, because of Columbus Sister Cities. So we're excited to sort of take a look and see what, what we can work on with them. We also talked about our agenda for the year and includes supporting DRCRC's efforts to recognize a wide variety of ethnic holidays throughout the year with displays and et cetera, and helping to get that word out with them. Nancy will follow up with the appropriate staff to talk about the specifics there. One of the items that we recognize is that we, we do have a need for an intern to help the group with some of our efforts that we want to work on. Those duties would include like agenda prep and minute-taking, supporting big table discussions relating to international conversations, preparing PowerPoints and other presentations for DFA roadshows and other information, assisting, doing some work on Gathering of the Dublins for 2021, and some other duties. Some of our goals you'll find actually within that position description. So I wanted to, I, I committed to the group to bring that to council's attention and ask for support from council to hire an intern with that purpose in mind and have a discussion about what that could look like.
Okay. Do you want to have that at this point in time?
I would love to, if you guys are, are so inclined. If not, we can certainly do it later, and I can circulate the position description, and we can do it next time.
I'd be interested in hearing from Dana what he thought about that and, you know.
Yeah, thank you. I think certainly intern time is what I think is needed, I guess, if the committee feels that way, and we can allocate that. In fact, I have asked the HR department to take a look at our interns across the board throughout the city, and what's available, how much we've traditionally spent or not spent. Sometimes we'll budget, when we budget for interns, we, we really budget time and a cost per hour, be they graduate-level student or undergraduate. And we allocate that accordingly. Jennifer's been working on that for me. One of the things I want to do is take a look at the intern program citywide and try to, to hire on the pool of interns relative to the time we have available and then allocate them. Now, you know, some of these are very technical, like engineering interns, need to be in the engineering world, communications interns tend to come out, planning interns, but then we have more, other than those three, we have other generalists, I guess I would call them. And try to set a program that becomes rotational through the city so they get the best experience. So, so it's a time allocation issue towards projects and things like that. So certainly can support that. But I want to look at, if you don't mind, I'll look at this. We're getting close to having that kind of put together, and then we can take a look at how we would. I, I wouldn't want to hire just for that specific purpose, but the allocation of time. And we, and we do have some intern time that's going unfilled. So we need to actually, the, the early glance I've had at that assessment is that we're, we're letting some time go unspent that we need to ramp on and make sure that we're giving these folks the opportunity, giving them a good experience, and we're getting a lot of great work out of it, which we typically do when we're, when we're using.
Yeah, I think the committee will be really supportive of that, of having a time allocation. The work that we are looking to do is pretty administrative in nature. So that would certainly satisfy, I think, what the group was thinking of.
It would help solve a lot of problems in terms of management.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Reporting and things like that could be problematic, so. Okay, well, maybe, you know, when you have opportunity, we'll, when your study is finished about.
Yeah, that's coming up quickly, so we'll, we'll get an answer to that really quick.
That'd be great, thank you. Thanks.
Amorphcy is, is myself. We heard from Theo Walsh, and we'll be looking forward to putting, providing input on the things that she mentioned this evening. And we have executive committee meetings next week. So I will have a more robust report at next offering. Andy, Logan, Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission? Thank you. And US 33 Corridor Group, Kathy and Jane?
I'm not quite sure when our next meeting is here, but probably next month, so.
Very good, Arts Council, John?
Let's see, the, right now you've got a good, good opportunity from January 7th to February 2nd to watch Emerging, an exhibit of Dublin students' artwork. And I think you're all going to be surprised. We have some unbelievably talented students. And it's broken down by grade and age group, and you're really going to be impressed. The board selected the bands for the concert in the Scioto Park. And they got some very unusual bands, so it should be really neat. They went, did a lot of work and spent a lot of time selecting some very interesting music. So I know sometimes in the years past, we had the same bands repeat like three or four years in a row. This time you're going to hear some really, really interesting music, so. They all worked hard on that, so it's exciting. And, do you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay. And that's really pretty much it. And then we've got a really interesting schedule for the whole year of art shows. Two of the artists are going to be doing paintings of the golf course. And one of them is highly talented, and I'm not familiar with the other one. So there's a whole series of very good art shows coming up. So if you get a chance to get down to the Art Center, I think you're all going to be surprised. Stop in. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education, Craig?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Washington Township, Jane, you've got your, got your peeps back there tonight?
I'll be calling you for an appointment this week.
Very good. Bridges, Jane?
We are meeting in a, in a week or so, but I would like to request the possibility of incorporating Dublin bridges during the ceremony for the bridge opening. I think, and I may have mentioned this when we were making some recommendations on the bridge naming. I think there's all kinds of bridges. And we have a Bridge of Kindness here that's very, very successful and has done a lot. So if there's any way that our staff could think about the incorporation of utilizing Dublin bridges and the kindness that they offer and the way that, that we link people to people, it would be an opportunity for Dublin bridges to be elevated a little bit more in the awareness and for people to understand what we do. And hopefully just give a little bit of, shine a little light on, on who we are besides just a visionary place, but a kind and compassionate city as well. Thanks.
Very good. Veterans Committee, John?
I think, and did we decide on January 29th? Are we, is it still up near? We're still trying to get everybody between the 5th and the 29th?
Still up near, we're trying to get a. Right, we're trying to get a date that works for, for everyone. So we're struggling a little bit, but we're trying to get organized.
Yeah, we're trying to get our organizational meeting set up, but we've got a lot of members, so they all got different times and dates, so.
Okay, Complete Council Committee, Christine?
Yeah, so we'll start kicking off some heavy communication here as the census gets closer. It's actually, the census has officially started, but most of us will not officially start our, our counts until April 1st. Amy Cram was kind enough to help put together a presentation that she took to the kids at Scioto High School, their social studies class. And we've asked her to take that same presentation to the other high schools as well. So often what we found is it's the kids who are the ones who really encourage their parents, especially those of some of our more diverse communities, to really participate in these things. So a big thank you to Amy for putting that together for everybody. So it'll be great fun to pull people together and reach out into the community. If there is interest from the public on working for the census, you do not have to be a citizen to work for the census. We will have some information up on the website. I think we already do, actually. So please feel free to visit that website. I know that they're still greatly in need of census workers. And it is temporary, it's part-time, it's a great opportunity for folks who want to get out there in the community a little bit.
Great lesson we learned with our recycling program, that if you start with kids, it all.
Yes.
It seems to go a lot easier at home. They put the pressure on, unlike anything we can apply, so, great. Council Roundtable, I'll start down with Mr. Peterson.
Two quick things. I had lunch today with my friend Sri, and Chiefs, you're going to get probably notified by Sri, and I had mentioned it to council. He had, Sri and Shankar started a first responders scholarship program for the firefighters of Washington Township and the police officers with the Dublin Police Department. And they are in the process of making their first wave of awards. And that whole, I know both you guys have vetted Sri, and he's just an absolutely fantastic guy. He and Shankar both. And next Tuesday, he's going to host a get-together at his house to keep that momentum going and, and start to get ready for the second wave of awards. And those two guys individually, out of their own pockets, came up and funded a significant amount of money to get that project started. And it's, it's a really fantastic thing in this community. So next Tuesday night, I'll send out an email to everybody inviting them to stop by Sri's house. He's a, he and Shankar are great contributors to this community. And I, I know he's sitting on the edge of his seat waiting for this birthday wish, but I saw Jack Nicholas turns 80 years old today, so.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Jack, from Dublin City Council. I know not many conversations about Dublin happen without Jack Nicholas being mentioned. So happy birthday to him. That's it.
Thank you. Christina?
I don't have anything further.
John?
Nothing.
Andy?
So two things. Last week Christina and I attended a conference at Ohio State University. We heard the National Church Residences present on senior housing options. So one of the things that I'm passionate about is senior housing. And we've planned and zoning is reviewing some of those type of developments now. Certainly something that it seems like residents want, not necessarily in their backyard. So one of the things that, that I'm interested in hearing your feedback on over the next month or two and maybe at the retreat is how we feel about senior housing and the directions we can go, where we can fit them in, if, if we want to accommodate that demographic. Secondly, I went through the list of concerns that some residents expressed while I was out campaigning. And I've been extremely impressed with the turnaround from Chief Dana and other staff in trying to resolve some fairly simple issues in the neighborhoods, which brings up another policy issue. I guess the question comes to me, how far can an individual or should an individual council member go in resolving an issue? I guess depending on the magnitude of the issue, it could become a policy issue that really needs to come before council. So I'd be interested in learning as the rookie, how we approach those situations. And, you know, is it kind of a judgment call on our parts? If it's speeding in the neighborhood, we get on the phone with Dana or Chief. But if it escalates, at what point do we need really council buy-in?
Certainly a topic worth discussing, that's for sure. Very good. Anything else further? No? Jane?
Just a couple of things, very quickly. We, we lost a longtime resident, Jim Richards, who's fifth generation Dublin resident. His family owned a historic, owns a historic house in Old Dublin that has been in the family since the 1850s. And Jim passed away in California, where he was out where, where his grandson is. And this is a very special man who told many stories and did lots and lots of good things for this community, and we're going to miss him. And I just, I think a little shout out to the community that one of our, our very old-time residents has, has left a very nice legacy here in Dublin. And then the other thing is, I just want to, we heard a lot from residents tonight. I want to thank.
You should run for president.
I should run for president, yeah, right. Don't tell my husband. I want to thank the staff for all the time and the energy they put in, especially over the holidays, for gathering research, for answering emails, for directing people on what they, what their, what their concerns were. I, I absolutely want to thank Dana for the hours and hours and hours and hours that I know he spent over the holiday, talking to people, talking, gathering research, asking a zillion questions, answering my phone calls and many, many of the residents' phone calls. I mean, this is truly an opportunity for the residents to see what it means to really get engaged and how the city really responds. We don't ju, and the council at the last meeting, I've got to give all of you kudos because there was a ton of people in here, and everybody had such an open mind. I, I am honored to serve with all of you because of that. I'm thrilled at the kind of collaborative response we've heard from residents tonight. It won't always be that way, and I know it won't. I know it won't. But it just speaks to the dedication and the commitment that this city staff, these council members and, and our city manager, to that open communication and bringing best solutions forward. So I, I thank you for that. So I know I got a couple of nice comments tonight, but it honestly, it honestly is, it is a big group effort. And, and Megan, also, I know that you got an awful lot of comments, not only from this, but also from the routing of the Shire Rings, which, which your staff did an amazing job at. We just, we just went through three major things in Ballantyne, and, and each time the residents have felt that we have really been good listeners. So thank all of you for that.
Thank you. Kathy?
Great, thank you. Not only do residents certainly come out with issues of that, but they also come out, as we all know, to help us plan the future. So I wanted to say thanks to the staff. Chris and I had an opportunity to spend some time at the Evening of Innovation last Thursday, Doug McCullough and team. It was impressive. A lot of the things that we have talked about as a council to be the most connected community, and a lot of the pilots that are underway every day. It was very interesting to see really all of that play out. I'm, I'm hopeful, I don't know, I wasn't able to be there at the very end, if there will be a report out to council of, yes, Dana's nodding about that, because.
Yes.
Yeah. Because it, it was a vibrant, so much so it was hard to hear sometimes. There was so much conversation going on and excitement over really the role that technology can play and should play, actually, in our lives. And the roles that technology can't take over some of the things that are just so vital to connecting the community. So that was a fun event, and I want to thank everybody. And also wanted to, to thank Matt. I was driving by Tuller Square Park this weekend, and there are benches out there now. I had mentioned to him earlier that, not a resident request, but an observation that we have this lovely park and a lot of community, and we need some places to sit. And so they're there. And that's one of the fabulous things, I think, that we have in our community is we have the opportunity to, to do big things, big and small, and that make a difference. So thanks, Matt. And I'm going to go sit on one here this week.
So which park did you take them from?
They're cemented in now, so I think they're not going back forever this. But thank you, Matt, for that, I appreciate that.
Very good, thank you. Yes, the Evening of Innovation was really insightful. And I'm sure we'll get a lot of great feedback from that because there were lots of comment cards being filled out. And, you know, I, I just want to thank our residents, not only our staff for putting it on, but our residents for taking a night to come and, and give us their thoughts and participate in that. Since we were together last, the general had a birthday, so happy birthday. Belated, Dana, thank you for all that you do for us. And I know Kathy and I attended a Women in Business luncheon where they discussed the food pantry. And so we'll be looking for some, some great things coming out of that. Dana, I did want to thank you for your letter of support for the Hyperloop 1, Ohio Hyperloop. That's a really important initiative. And I, you said it very well of how Central Ohio is the prime location to start your next chapter. And I, you know, I, I believe that to be true. And I think that Hyperloop technology, if we can secure that test track there at TRC is really going to be a game changer for our region because it likely means we would be implemented first, which will put us as the, really the, the first in the country to have the Hyperloop technology. So thank you for taking the time to write that letter to Mr. Walder, and we will see what happens from there. If there is nothing further for the good order, we are adjourned.